Good morning Birmingham. Good morning City Council. I welcome you to the January 25th meeting of the Birmingham City Council. I call the meeting to order. We will have invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Clinton Woods. If you all please stand, thank you.
Morning, bow your heads. Dear Father, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to just come before you and serve once again today. We just thank you for waking us up and getting us on our way, Lord. I ask that you just touch the hearts and minds of everyone serving in this city, Lord. Allow us to provide the best service to the residents of Birmingham, Lord. Continue to keep everyone safe, Lord. Continue to remove a spirit of hate from the city that leads to violence, Lord. I just ask that you continue to guide our steps, Lord, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much Counselor Woods. Good morning, Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Tate.
Good morning, President.
Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Woods. Council President Pro Tim Smithman. Council President Alexander.
Good morning. Thank you, President. All right, at this time, I'd like to call for approval of the minutes from the previous meetings of August 17th and August 24th, 2021.
So moved.
Councilmember Williams and Tate. How would you like to vote? Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Okay, and Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. That vote should be of matter, President.
All right, thank you. Those minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready from August 31st, 2021, through January 18th, 2022. Good morning. Do we have any communications from the mayor?
Morning, Madam President, members of the council, members of the public. The mayor will have a report. He'll give it once he comes in, but we can go ahead and move forward, ma'am.
All right, thank you. At this time, Counselors, I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules. If you could go ahead and have approval to have our presentation.
So moved.
Second.
Let me know by saying aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Counselor Hunter Williams of District 2 has a presentation that he would like to make. So Counselor Williams, would I?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to come down to the podium, and if my guest also could come up to the podium. And then while we do, I have a video that we're going to play. A little background to that video is, the city of Birmingham and our Birmingham metro area currently has three living Holocaust survivors that live in our metro area. And I was fortunate enough to have the opportunity to sit down with one of them, Dr. May, and interview him. And so this is a little excerpt from that, and this is leading to this upcoming Thursday, which is International Holocaust Survivors Remembrance Day. So if y'all could play that video while I go down there.
Good morning. My name is Hunter Williams. I serve on the Birmingham City Council. I chair Economic Development and Tourism. I'm really happy today to be joined by Dr. May. Dr. May has a very unique story, life story, who has really endured many different obstacles and has a lot of insight on overcoming those obstacles as we discuss the Holocaust, what it has meant to him, his family, as well as his descendants, all of which have a home in the Birmingham metro area.
The persecution of the Jews started immediately after Hitler came to power in 1933. I remember marching, the SA and the storm troopers marching in the streets, boycotts of Jewish stores, the Hitler Youth that encompassed all the kids. I was isolated, segregated, and shunned. I had no one to play with, no one to talk to. And this one could tolerate for a little while, but became intolerable after a few years.
And then at 9:00, you moved to Frankfurt with your aunt, but is that a direct effect of it being so unlivable?
In Camberg, yes. You see, in a small town, everybody knows everyone else. And I was a kid walking down the street, "There goes the Jew."
Can you go into a little bit about Frankfurt, what it was like? You moved there when you were nine years old. You were there, was it just you and your aunt at that time there, or did you have other family members there?
That's correct. Just my aunt and I. We would walk the streets. No one would know us. No one would abuse us. No one, in a big city, you could get lost.
And how long were you in this school?
Several years, until age 12.
Okay.
At age 12, this was in 1938, in November, Kristallnacht happened. Jewish institutions, homes, were invaded, destroyed. This is when the synagogues were burnt. This is when my school was burnt. We were told that to get out of the house by a quote, "a friend," because bad things will happen.
And Kristallnacht, it obviously means Night of the Broken Glass.
Right.
I think during that day and night, approximately 91 people of the Jewish faith were killed, and I think around roughly 30,000, which is obviously an estimate, were sent to concentration camps. President Roosevelt condemned what happened that day and withdrew his ambassador from Germany. But there were no changes in immigration law for anybody of the Jewish faith. As a matter of fact, immigration laws did not change at all at that time for anybody of the Jewish faith in all of Europe. Can you go into what that did in terms of for you personally and your family?
By this time, our economic sources had dried up. The store was closed. Schools were closed as a result of Kristallnacht. The Jews in Germany at this time were economically nonviable. Everyone was saying, "Where can we go?" There was no place open.
Pro Team for sitting down with us. It really was an amazing experience to get to interview one of our last surviving Holocaust members that we have here in the city of Birmingham, and that was Dr. May. And all of those pictures were actual footage throughout his life, throughout living in Germany, and then eventually being able to make his way to Cuba and then find safety in the United States. He has an incredible story. He has many generations, family that live here in the Birmingham metro area. But we have a proclamation, this upcoming Thursday, January 27th, is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. The city of Birmingham will also be celebrating that. It's our Holocaust Remembrance Day. I'm not going to bore everybody with the page-long proclamation, but I would like to introduce Ms. Joyce Cheven from the Birmingham Jewish Federation, who can be much more articulate than what I have written down on this proclamation.
Good morning, and thank you to Counselor Hunter Williams for inviting me and members of our Jewish community to be here today for this solemn event. As Hunter said, I'm Joyce Cheven. I'm the Director of the Jewish Community Relations Council of the Birmingham Jewish Federation. Since 1962, the JCRC has worked to build bridges of understanding to our broader community, combat antisemitism, and advocate for public policy and social justice issues important to our Jewish community. We do this work primarily through outreach and working collaboratively with our faith and civic partners in the community, and like today, educating others to our history, our cultural, and our traditions. We not only like to share our beliefs, but in turn learn about others. For only by truly knowing each other can we work to develop paths forward together. It has been 80 years since the Holocaust began, yet violent antisemitism still remains a threat, as we witnessed at a Texas synagogue just this month. The lessons of the Holocaust have never been more relevant. Antisemitism is a major concern of American Jews today and us in Birmingham. The most recent audit of antisemitic incidents in the United States recorded more than 2,100 acts of assault, vandalism, and harassment, a 12% increase over the past year. A 2021 survey of American Jews found that 1 in 4 having reported been a victim of an antisemitic incidence in the past 12 months. 22% of the over 1,400 surveyed said they have avoided wearing or displaying things that might enable others to identify them as Jewish, and 17% have avoided certain places, events, or situations out of fear. In the past three years, 11 people were killed while praying at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh. A shooter entered a synagogue in California, killing one and injuring others. Orthodox Jews have been violently attacked on New York City streets. Jewish institutions and Holocaust memorials have been marred by graffiti and shattered windows, and the list goes on. How can this be happening in America in the 21st century? In the wake of each of these tragic events, our Jewish community looks to our city for support. Our two largest synagogues, the Birmingham Jewish Federation and Foundation, the Alabama Holocaust Education Center, the Levitt Jewish Community Center, the Cone Early Learning Center, and the Annie Miles Jewish Day School are all located within the city of Birmingham. Our community is scared, tense, and on high alert. And just as we, the Jewish community stands up and speaks out against hate in all forms, we are looking for our mayor and city officials to do the same for us. Though I come with these sobering statistics and news, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful because I stand with you here today, the caring citizens and counselors of the city of Birmingham. We all must understand the need to recognize this tragic history and educate others so that we may work together to assure that no one need feel like the other, that hate never prevails, and never again is not an empty promise. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Counsel. I appreciate it. And I think it's important to note that this proclamation signifies that the leadership of the city of Birmingham stands with everybody of all faiths, whether it be the Christian faith, the Jewish faith, or whatever your faith is, or if you're agnostic. If you're a citizen of the city of Birmingham, you're a citizen of the city of Birmingham, for all each other's neighbors. So thank you very much for being here. Thank you, Counsel.
Yes, Ms. Clark?
I just wanted to, I did, I would like to just quickly, I would just like to quickly thank you for coming and for making our community aware of the horrors of the Holocaust. I've had a chance to visit the center in its first location over on Arlington when Rebecca Dobrinsky was running it, and participate in some of the programs, and it was very moving. And I also want to just thank you for your advocacy for human rights and social justice for everyone, and just, you know, your great citizenship in Birmingham, the many ways your community make our community better. So thank you.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate you again. Thank you.
Did we move the resolution?
And Counselor?
Did we move the resolution?
Did not move the resolution. So it's a proclamation, it was a proclamation.
Okay, so it's the mayor's, it's not ours.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you all. At this time, we return back to our agenda, and Mr. Mayor, did you have some communication? I think he's talking. We'll go ahead and read the consent. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Morning, Madam President.
Good morning.
Morning to the entire council. Thank you, Hunter Williams, for the presentation. That's our local community, but it's good to see that this is a national conversation as well, from Department of, well DHS, all the way to the US Attorney's Office in regards to doing what can be done to protect those in our Jewish community and our Jewish neighbors. As each of you all know, and I want to start by saying thank you for supporting the Guaranteed Income Pilot Program for, that's titled Embrace Mothers. As many of you all know, a little bit over 60% of all households in the city of Birmingham are led by single mothers. Over 60% of all households in our city limits are led by single mothers. And so beginning January 31st, which is next Monday, single mothers can apply for guaranteed income provided by initiative implemented not only by my office but supported by the council. Again, thank you for that. The Embrace Mothers is a research pilot program in partnership with mayors for guaranteed income. So the city of Birmingham, along with a few other cities across our nation, are participating in this program. This program will support 110 Birmingham mothers/residents that will receive $375 a month for a 12-month period. Participants are selected via random drawings by a third party. The best part, there are no strings attached. There have been some questions about why. One of the questions I received is just something to celebrate. We're not jumping up and down about households being led by single mothers, but we are acknowledging that's a fact. But we acknowledge another fact. The city of Birmingham not only has a significant amount of poverty, the city of Birmingham has a significant amount of concentrated poverty. Layer that on top of these homes that are led by single-family mothers. Some who work no job and are doing everything they can to provide to those who work two jobs and still are having a hard time providing for their child or children. I think it's incumbent upon initiatives like this that have a direct intentionality of putting a dent in poverty, particularly in our community. And so the Embrace Mothers Initiative stands to help our city establish a solid footing during a time that is, I think some would say, over the last two years, pretty unsteady for a lot of folk. Creating stronger, healthier households makes for a stronger, healthier city. I think that's something that this council agrees with. The application window will be open for one week only. Again, the application window will be open for one week only, closing on Monday, February 7. The form is strictly online and will be offered in English and in Spanish. There are two forms, there are two ways you can get more information. One is birminghamal.gov/EmbraceMothers. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/EmbraceMothers. Or you can call 205-254-2702. Again, that's 205-254-2702. Madam President, that is my very short note this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate all those announcements, and I know we're all, we're happy to support the Embrace Mothers program. Counselor Tate?
Mayor Wilfen, I would just personally like to thank you and the city of Birmingham. I did have an opportunity over the weekend to read about the Guaranteed Income Beautiful Program, to see our mayor team up with other mayors across the nation to make sure that this happens. So thank you, Mayor Wilfen, for bringing this program to so many mothers. Like you said, a lot of people are in bed, in poverty, and so thank you again for bringing this program to Birmingham, and also shout out to all the mayors that participated in the Guaranteed Income Program.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Clerk, can we consider the consent agenda?
On page 2, we should have items 3 and 4. I think we made the notation about items 1 and 2 with the no recommendation, so they shouldn't be on consent. So we have items, right now, we have items 3 and 4. On page 3, we have item number 5 on consent. Page 4, we have item 6 on consent. Page 7, item 7 is on consent. Page 8, item 8 is on consent. In just one minute, we need to go back to page 2, just for notation purposes. Note that 1 and 2, there was no recommendation by the Public Safety Committee. That's for items 1 and 2. On page 10, item number 9 is on consent. Then we skip over to page 13, we have item 10 on consent. Page 14, item 11 is on consent. Page 15, we have item 12 on consent. Page 16, item 14 is on consent. Page 17, we have items 16, 17, and 18 on consent. And we removed item 15 in pre-council meeting. Note that on item number 16, the amount should be changed to $22,750. That's for item number 16.
Mr. Clerk, Madam President?
Yes.
If we have that agreement changed to note the mutual agreement, if you want to correct it now to add a consent, or just keep it off, let me know.
Yes, I know we had a question during pre-council about some of the terminology as far as the selection of the teams that were included in this agreement with the SWAC, and so we were adding. Could you just verify for them what we were adding?
Yes, on page 3 of the agreement, under item 3A, it should read, "The SWAC games shall be played at Legion Field on a date and teams in which mutually the parties agree to host the SWAC in the city of Birmingham."
All right, and it was agreed that by changing this, we do not have to republish it?
That's correct.
All right. Does that satisfy you, and we can leave that on consent? All right, we'll continue with that one on consent, Mr. Clerk. Thank you.
All right, and also note, it was recommended by Budget and Finance, and the funding source is professional service lodging tax, to my understanding.
Yes.
Pick back up with the consent agenda. It stated 16, 17, and 18 are on consent. Page 18, we have items 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24 on consent. Page 19, we have items 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30 on consent. Page 20, items 31, 32, 33, and 34 on consent. Page 21, we have items 35, 36, 37, and 38 on consent. Page 22, we have items 39, 40, 41, and 42 on consent. Please note that on items 40, on item 40, we should strike "itemized" and put the word "advanced," and then on item 41, we should strike "advanced" and put "itemized." That's on items 40 and 41, just swapping the language. On item number 42, if you'll skip over to page 24, we are going to withdraw item 38 for the resolution of item 42. We're going to withdraw item number 38. That concludes the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselors, do we have any items that you want to add or remove from consent? Counselor Tate?
Mr. Clerk, I am going to remove item 1 and 2 off of consent and delay it and refer it back to Public Safety.
You're going to remove 1?
1 and 2.
Okay.
And delay it at this time?
Yes, ma'am. We'll take a motion on those when we finish with the consent.
All right, thank you.
Oh, 15 is on, yes.
All right, we noted that change. Any other items, Counselors? All right, before we consider the consent agenda, I'd like to read this statement. "All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, syndicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced." Counselors, can I entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
So out here, Counsel Pro Tim Smithman?
Yes. Who's second, Counselor Moore?
And we just, we're going to delay it and bring it back in the next week. I wanted to. Yeah, because I don't want to bring it back to Public Safety. Bring it back.
All right, that voting should be open right about now. Councilmember Moore, how would you like to vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My apologies. Councilmember Williams, consent agenda?
Upstairs.
Same?
Yep.
Thank you. Where is that button? Okay, got it.
All right, thank you. So those consent items are consented. You are here for any item that was listed as consent and has been approved by this council. Those items are approved, and so you don't have to remain unless you just want to stay with us for the rest of the morning. Thank you. Those items are approved. First item, Mr. Clerk?
All right, we'll go ahead and take up items 1 and 2. Want to do both of them at the same time this year?
Yeah, 1 and 2, delay it and bring it back.
Okay, give me a second.
To next week.
Item 1, a resolution relative to the application, Matigo Temple for the transfer of allowance retail liquor Class 1 license to be used at Mahogany 1709, 3rd Avenue West Birmingham, in the area of all supporters. And item 2 is a resolution relative to the application, the Matigo Temple for Division 1 dance permit to be used at Mahogany 1709, 3rd Avenue West Birmingham, in the area of all supporters. So both items, we get a motion to get it before you first.
Motion for both.
Second.
All right, you got Counselor Williams, and I heard a second from?
10.
Okay, and item is before you. Now we can do whatever we need to do with it.
You want to delay or send back to Public Safety?
Delay it. I don't want to bring it back.
I'm looking for a one-week delay.
One-week delay.
Okay.
Saca.
One week.
Yep.
All right, voting should be open for a one-week delay.
Clerk, I'm going to do yes.
Yes, sir. All right. And Counselmember Abbott?
Yes.
All right, one week is up.
All right, thank you, Counselors. That motion passes, so both item 1 and 2 will be delayed for one week. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
All right, looks like we're going to 13, which is on. Page 16, and ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute and amend and restate redevelopment agreement Housing Reinvestment Corporation of America, under which the city will transfer up to 27 vacant lots, which compromise a portion of the former military apartments property located at the 1,110 blocks of 51st Street in the Bellevue Heights neighborhood, to Housing Reinvestment Corporation of America for a price of $1 per lot. And Housing Corporation of America will develop a single-family housing unit on each lot transferred in consideration for the redevelopment agreement to complete the project and sell homes, both as market rate and affordable homes. The city hereby agrees to provide an amount not to exceed $450,000 in support of the project authorized by ALM code number 1196A and consistent with the development of affordable housing under the American Rescue Plan. And this is item of permanent operation. If we're going to pass it today, I'll need UC?
A move for UC?
Saca.
Are you all in favor? Let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion on the item, please.
Move the item?
Saca.
All right, item is before you.
All right, thank you very much. This item was presented yesterday and recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. And Chief, just want to give us a rundown of this item.
I'll have Attorney Sheffield come forward. Mr. Stallworth as well.
And we have Mr. Corey Stallworth come also.
Thank you. Hello, Attorney Sheffield.
Morning. Keith Sheffield, Office of the City Attorney.
Thank you. And Mr. Stallworth, we just wanted to get some information about this item. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
State, my name is Corey Stallworth. I serve as Deputy Director of Housing Programs for the Department of Community Development. And the item before you- And the item before you is to request amendment to the redevelopment agreement with the Housing Reinvestment Corporation of America, which is the nonprofit arm of NCRC. The main change in this agreement is to allocate the $540,000 of ARP funding to this project. This will benefit the project greatly by decreasing the cost to build the affordable housing component of this project. The agreement carves out 40% of the 27 homes to be carved out for affordable housing. And so this $540,000 will help the developer to reduce the purchase price of these homes from what would typically probably be over $200,000 each to round about a range of $165,000 to $180,000. A brief overview, and entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Counselors, do you have any questions if you would like to request to speak? You can use your iPad, or you can let me know if you have any questions. Yes, this is actually was presented to us at that time, as well as Budget and Finance, yes. Any questions? All right. Did you have one, Counselor? Ms. Abbott, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, and in pre-council, we already discussed this, and I just wanted to make sure that the request was simply to make Exhibit A match the rest of the agreement, where it says 27 lots, that there would be 27 lots shown on Exhibit A. Is that a difficulty?
Attorney Foster is making those changes, so that's not a problem.
Okay, and one other question. On page five, the second bullet point from the bottom of the contract says qualified purchasers of the affordable homes must be 80% or below the area median income. I just want someone to explain what that means. 80% or below the area median, 80% of what?
So that's 80% of the income, the average person's income in the city of Birmingham. So they have to be 80% of their average income or below. So if you recall, I gave you what those incomes were in our Budget and Finance, and I can go over those again. So for a family of four, that's considered extremely low income. That would be around about $26,000 annually. For a family of four, around 50%, that is $38,000. And right at the top of 80%, that is $61,000.
That's for a family of four.
For a family of four, so we just take the average, so that's the average family.
So it's 80% or more below the area median income. Is that right? Is it?
It's 80% below or below. So 80% is the cap.
Okay. What is the area median income?
So I don't have those numbers in front of me to share with you at the same.
I don't have a left, I'm a left, LOW.
You have what?
Low.
Low, okay. Well, is it like $31,000? Is it $25,000? Is it just about?
About 73.
Oh, okay, so it's 37 something.
Yeah, I think the median in the city of Birmingham is LOW, but it's 37 and change.
Okay, thank you.
And do we have that? I think we Googled it.
Yeah, so we have.
We should all know that by looking at our page tabs.
Go ahead, Mr. Stallworth.
Yeah, so I think this is for a family of four or five. This says $58,000.
We know it's lower than that. Yeah, all right.
Thank you, those are all my, that's all my questions, if we just make everything match up.
Thank you. There are no other questions, counselors? We're ready for the vote, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Stallworth and Attorney.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Clerk, yes.
I just wanted to ask the President of Bellevue Heights.
I'm so sorry. Mr. Gunn, we want to acknowledge that you're here, and thank you, good to see you. Thank you very much. All right, the vote is up. So that item passes, number 13. We are happy to pass that and provide that assistance so we can get those homes built. I think yesterday we heard four are already up and being built.
Close to being ready.
All right. And we'll all, we won't?
After how many years?
I can remember Camellia Terrace from when I was here before.
All right, well, thank you. Again, we're glad to see Mr. Gunn, he's got those houses coming up. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, next item.
It should be item 43. Receiving the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to replacing the windows and installing bulletproof glass at fire stations 15 and 19.
All right, thank you very much. Reading of those items, can I ask a question? Do we have to?
Counselor Abbott, I think.
Okay, sorry, you sure did, Ms. Abbott. You sure never did.
I just wanted to ask where these fire stations are. And if we've caught the people who keep on shooting at them? Because it sounds like they've been shooting at these fire stations for a long time.
Any reply? Just a statement about them. Oh, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. These fire stations is on our western side of town. And western side of town.
And whatever sorry person would shoot at a fire station, anyway, I withhold my comments.
All right, thank you.
They're both on the western side.
Stations number 15 and 19. Thank you very much. All right, counselors, we don't have any old and new business. At this time, I'll entertain comments from each of you. Any counselors have any comments? Counselor Woods? You have your virtual.
Right now, show off.
Can we play his? Are we ready to play his virtual comment?
No, please.
After the council meeting, I'm so happy. Counselor Tate? Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. Neighborhood meetings tonight. Dolomite will meet via conference call tonight at 6:00 PM. That dial-in information is 602-580-9525. Access code 3789426. En and Rich will meet via conference call on Thursday at 5:00 PM. That dial-in information is 978-990-5363. Access code is 7345914. Public Safety Committee meeting will be held today at 3:30 here in the council chamber. The next meeting will be February the 8th at 3:30. Submission should be sent to my office at Brandon McCray. No later than Thursday, February the 5th at 4:00 PM. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Next week, my announcements also will be on video, so y'all don't have to endure them. But Creston Neighborhood Association will be meeting via Zoom this Thursday, the 27th, at 6:00 PM. Economic Development's work session will be Tuesday, February the 1st, which will be immediately following council. And then on February the 8th, the Northeast YMCA, which is one week from today, will be holding their monthly food distribution from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. That is the Northeast YMCA. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for a resolution of sympathy for Bob Jones, Attorney Bob Jones. And I'd like to read the resolution, so do I get the UC first?
Yes, so that we can entertain your.
Go ahead.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And pose, now it's just a motion to get it before us. Okay, now the item is before us, you can go here.
And now you can read, thank you.
Thank you. I've known Robert Jones, Attorney Jones, as Bugs since I was a little girl. We went to the same Catholic church on Sinner Street on Dynamite Hill. So I thought he was a lovely person and really an exemplary human being, so I'm proud to have an opportunity to present, to offer this resolution of sympathy on behalf of the council. Whereas there are certain outstanding members of our community who, through their selfless commitment and dedication, have served to better the quality of life in our community. Their service to the public has made measurable positive impact on the lives of its residents. Attorney Robert Jones Jr. was one such individual. It is with great sorrow, the Council of the City of Birmingham records the passing of Attorney Jones, who passed away on Friday, January 14th, 2022. And whereas affectionately known as Bugs and later Bob, Robert Jones Jr. was born July 11, 1948, in Birmingham, Alabama, to Beatrice Pirilu Jones and Robert A. Jones Senior. His educational development began as a student at Holy Family Elementary School and the historic A.H. Parker High School. He later graduated from the University of Alabama at Birmingham. And whereas his career began as an educator in the Birmingham Public Schools, which ended upon his enrollment in the Cumberland School of Law at Sanford University, he practiced law for many years, serving as Executive Director of the Birmingham Area Legal Services Corporations, working with several law firms and establishing and practicing his own firm for a number of years. At the end of his career, he served as City Attorney for the City of Birmingham, Alabama. During his career, he was loved and admired by his clients and associates. And whereas a man of many interests and passions, Robert Jones Jr. was devoted to his community, serving as a founding member and the first president of the Magic City Bar Association. He further served his community by his membership on several boards, including the Birmingham Park and Recreation Board and the Board of Alabama State University. And whereas while pursuing his degree at the University of Alabama at Birmingham, Robert Jones Jr. met the love of his life and soulmate, Margaret Davis Jones, to whom he was married on November 26, 1970, and to this union was born a beloved son, Robert A. Jones III. And whereas as a devoted husband, father, and prominent attorney, Robert Jones Jr.'s name is synonymous with character, dignity, intellect, depth, and humor, qualities evident to all those who were fortunate enough to have known him. He will be deeply missed and truly merits the grateful tribute of this legislative body. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, pauses in its deliberations with immense sorrow to inscribe upon its records this tribute to the memory of Attorney Robert Jones Jr. This honor will serve for future generations to know and appreciate his admirable character, community service, and the respect and esteem to which he richly earned. And it's presented this 22nd, well, it was prepared for the 22nd day of January 2022 at the recommendation of Council President Protemper Crystal N. Smitherman and Counselor Carol E. Clark. So what happens now?
Very much, we appreciate you. And thank you for bringing that resolution in memory of Attorney Jones. I know he and his wife, Margaret, were just very loving couples. So did we have the vote on the item yet?
We can, I can just do it.
Okay, voice, thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. So that motion passes, and we do appreciate you bringing that resolution. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. And if you'll indulge me, I'd like to present a brief video.
It's great to be out observing the Martin Luther King Day with the Five Points West community. We're kicking off a year of the Be Litter Free Campaign in District 8.
I'm excited to be out here on this day of service. This is an effort between all of the community partners here that make up District 8 and District 7.
As we are approaching the World Games coming here to Five Points West, we are kicking off with a big cleanup in order to sort of prepare our area for the World Game that will be coming here in about six months.
In particular, on a special day, Dr. Martin Luther King's Day, which we are celebrating. But in effect, it really is a day of service, and that is part of the reason why I am here and a lot of others are here just as well, to improve the community, to improve our lives, as well as to make this place a destination stop.
Knocking out six neighborhoods today. We've got volunteers who've signed up through Hands on Birmingham, from Alabama Power Company, Miles College, we've got the Ramsey High School tennis team.
Birmingham Southern is with us. We also had the Blackwater River Keeper. We have the Municipal Court. We have United Way Hand Zone.
And we're just excited to see all the participation of the community partners out here to clean up our city on this day of service.
Well, it's an important event. We want to ensure that our community is clean and take care of it, not just for us, but also for visitors.
I'm really inspired by the turnout today, the Five Points West community, all the leaders, all the work that went into making today possible. Ms. Dora Sims organizing all the volunteers, having the support of the city council in really spearheading an initiative for communities to take pride and clean up.
We know that the day is the day on and not off. And so I'm very encouraged and thankful to the community leadership for spearheading this, and we're coming your way, West End.
Mr. Johnny Gunn, who's the Vice President of the community and really supports all the community initiatives, and thank you, Mr. Gunn.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
I have no announcements at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is January 26th at 3:30 PM. That's tomorrow. And we have some cases to consider and some people to appoint to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. So the Zoning Board of Adjustment is so short on people right now that I'm not sure that they can function. So this is very important. So that's tomorrow at 3:30 PM. And tonight, the Redmont Neighborhood Association is meeting via conference call at 5:00. Hope everybody stays safe. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. The Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association meeting that was scheduled for tonight has been canceled. Crestwood North Neighborhood Association will be meeting at 6:30 tonight. It will be an in-person meeting. In particular, I know that the, there will be a discussion about the tennis courts at Crestwood Park. Some renovations there to accommodate folks who are playing pickleball. So please participate in that. And then just to my colleagues, just a reminder that the Jefferson County City Councilors Coalition will be meeting in Gardendale this coming Friday at 11:30. So please mark your calendars if you'd like to. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Counselor Quinn. Madam Protemper?
Thank you, Madam President. Next Budget and Finance meeting will be on Monday, February 14th at 3:30 PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due on Wednesday, February 9th at noon to Laquita Wilson and Kevin Owens. The next PIC meeting is Tuesday, February 1st at 2:00. In the council chambers, submissions are due tomorrow by noon. And also, just want to remind everyone, we have the USFL announcement today at 11:00. I'm very excited about this, and I think this is a great thing coming to Birmingham. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. The District 6 office wants to extend a prayer to Ms. Brenda Vaughn. She is the Neighborhood President for Mason City. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Counselor. The only announcement I have for District 7 is that there are no Neighborhood Association meetings scheduled for this week. And for my counselors that are members of the Administration Committee, our meeting for this afternoon is canceled. I will get with you to select another date. I would like to still meet this month, but there's information that we need to pass along to our newest member so that you can have some opportunity to review that information. And I think the Counselor Abbott and I, we've had that, some of these information for some time. And so we would like to bring an item for consideration, but we need to share that information with you so that you can have adequate time to review. And so we'll do that and reschedule as we can. And I'd also like to congratulate Counselor Moore and his wife. We are showering them today. The baby isn't here yet. At least you looked at me like, is the baby here? I wasn't making that announcement. But we do just want to congratulate you on your impending birth. And we have some. And we have some goodies out back that we'll be showering you with. So, congratulations to you all. We want to thank our officers who are on duty today, Cedric Pinkert, Samuel Coleman, and Clarence Adams. We appreciate your service, and we thank you for watching over us today and assisting our visitors. Thank you all very much. Counselors, at this time, can we have a?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Hey, everybody. Counselor Clinton Woods, just a couple of quick reminders. If you have any issues going on in your area, make sure you get those into us. Number one, call three one one, report that issue. But then, reach out to me directly. My information is right here on the screen. We want to hear from you, so if you have an issue in your area, make sure you get that into us, so we can be working on that and get that corrected as quickly as possible. So, don't hesitate, get that information in. We want to be working on those things for you. Also, we're really excited, USFL coming to Birmingham. They're going to be holding their entire season right here in the city. We're bringing back the Birmingham Stallions. That's going to be huge. But we really need you to help, we need you to pitch in. Do everything you can to make Birmingham a true sports city. You know, we've got the Birmingham Stallions coming back on, we've got the Birmingham Squadron right now in season. We've got the Birmingham Legion getting ready for their season. And so, we've got so much going on. I want to make sure we get out and support all of these teams. And so, we're excited for the upcoming season, as well as the squadron that are playing right now. Also, District One, really big thing today, we kicked off Walk with the Doc on Sunday. And so, really excited about that. Walk with the Doc kicked off their very first chapter in the state of Alabama. Walk with the Doc Birmingham, it's really about bringing out doctors, connecting doctors and people around, living a healthy lifestyle, getting out and exercising regularly. And so, it was great to have a bunch of residents come out, walk and learn and talk and get to know each other. So, really excited about that, and I'm going to keep it going. So, we've got a little bit of information to show to you about what happened today, but like I said, keep us posted. If you have issues, let us know. If you have ideas, share those. And so, we're really excited for what's going on in the district right now, and be blessed.